Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to India Affiliate Summit, India and Beyond. In this special session on SEO hot seat, you will learn how to optimize your website. I would like to welcome our speaker for this masterclass, Mr. Stephen Spencer, co-author, The Art of SEO. Mr. Spencer is an SEO expert and bestselling author. He has three books published by O'Reilly, The Art of SEO, Social E-Commerce, and Google Power Search. I would request all the delegates to keep posting their questions and responses in the chat box, and our speaker will address a few towards the end of the session. Over to you, Stephen.
Thank you. It's great to be here. Thank you so much for being here in my session. I know there are a lot of other things that you could be doing with your time. I do ask that you give me 100% of your attention over this next hour because I don't want you to be distracted by Facebook, by your email, by messaging apps of any sort, because I want you to take in what you're learning and apply it in your life, in your business, in your work, and I want you to teach it to others who could really benefit from learning SEO. As an example, my oldest daughter, she learned SEO at 14 years old. She was motivated to learn how to make money while she slept with SEO blogging and Google AdSense. She saw that I had multiple websites that were making passive income in that same way, and she wanted to learn how to do it. She had a passion for a website and a gaming platform that was very popular at the time called Neopets owned by the TV network Nickelodeon. And she turned that passion for Neopets into a website and started earning passive income from Google AdSense. So imagine if you were to share what you're going to learn in this next hour with somebody you care about, whether it's your child or your significant other, or a relative, a friend, a colleague, somebody who could really have their life changed by what you're going to share with them, because you're going to learn it right now. So I'm going to walk you through some core concepts, and then we're going to go into an interactive mode where I'm going to pull up various tools. I'm going to ask you to participate by sharing, volunteering your website. If you're a little scared, you don't want your website to be shown on the screen. Instead, then you can share competitors, but I really encourage you to be brave. Put your own website out there. Give me that URL that I can pull up and evaluate. I'll be gentle, but also be very helpful, and everybody's going to learn, even if it's not your website that's being evaluated. Take notes, because this is going to be stuff you can apply to your website, or your client's website, or your employer's website. So let's go ahead and get started. Please just confirm that you can see my screen.
We can, Stephen.
All right, perfect. There we go. Now, this is me. These are my books, three books published with O'Reilly. The one I'm most known for, The Art of SEO. You can still see me in the small window, right? This is the book itself. You can see it's actually big. Don't worry, you don't have to learn all this. You don't have to learn 1,000 pages of SEO. And surprisingly, this isn't everything about SEO. I probably would need three more volumes to cover everything. But I also want you to think holistically, because this isn't about just optimizing your website or your search engine rankings. It's about optimizing yourself, and you can optimize yourself like I did. This was me 12 years ago. Let me turn up the volume so you can hear what I sounded like.
The one that you really wanted, the main promoting page. Not using role equals no follow to direct page rank flow. There are a lot of low-value links on your blog that have suboptimal anchor text, like the one that you're really...
Oh, my goodness. That was embarrassing. That was me, if you can believe it. But I went through a transformation. I optimized myself. It all started in 2009 when I walked on 2,000-degree hot coals. You know, this idea of a firewalk, it's not just a metaphor. You can do it in your bare feet and not get burned. I had no idea, but that was a pivot point for me. It was an entire life shift that happened in that moment, because I realized that if I can do that, I can do anything. And you all can do anything. Just put your mind to it, make a decision, and go out there and do it. This is an incredible opportunity that you have, even in this difficult moment in time. It's actually a great opportunity for you to step up. So once I made that shift and changed my diet and started exercising and started this whole personal development journey, well, a few years later, I was able to meet the woman of my dreams, and we got married in Costa Rica, and now we have a beautiful one-year-old baby together, a little boy. So I wanted to share some of the lessons I've learned, not just, as I said, in SEO, but in life, personal development, spirituality. I've been to India multiple times. I went to Wannas University near Chennai, had a powerful awakening experience in India. Also went to Adipur, and that was actually the first time I had a spiritual awakening was at Udaipur in 2012. It was also life-changing, even more so than the firewalk. So I share a lot of that wisdom and so forth of people who I look up to, people who have changed my life on the Get Yourself Optimized podcast. And then I also have the Marketing Speak podcast. So I presume, since you're in this session, you care a lot about your website, or your clients' or employer's website, and online marketing. So Marketing Speak is like a university education, not just SEO, but Facebook ads, e-commerce, analytics, paid search, conversion, right? All of the top experts in the world have been on this show, many, many surprisingly huge guests, people like Seth Godin, for example, Dan Kennedy, Jay Abraham, Matt Mullenweg, who invented WordPress. These were all guests on Marketing Speak. So it's all free information. You have no excuse to not seize the day and make a huge shift in your life. So I'm going to show you something that's a little alarming, potentially, that your SEO is currently broken, and I'm going to prove it to you. I'm going to pull up some various tools, some of them you may have heard of or used even, and some of them I'm sure you haven't. So this is going to be a really fun, interactive session. So I also don't want you to feel too overwhelmed, like you need to use every tool, you need to know about every technical aspect, you need to know about every nuance in SEO. Think, need to know. What do I need to know in order to make a difference, in order to reveal light in the world? And know that you are leaving money on the table, or your employer, your clients, your friends, family members who have websites, but that's not a permanent problem, right? You can fix it. So let's go ahead and start looking at some websites. As I'm showing you some of these tools, I'm also going to kind of compartmentalize them into, or the topics that we discuss into three pillars. The three pillars of SEO are architecture, that's all the technical stuff, content, which includes all the keyword research, and links, right? Backlinks, inbound links are the currency of SEO. If you don't have great link authority, you're not going to rank. So those are the three pillars, and some tools that we're going to look at, or some of the ideas are going to be specific to one pillar, but some will be across multiple pillars. So are we getting any questions yet?
We actually have a website that's been nominated for your review.
Perfect. That's awesome. So let's go ahead and switch to Safari, and any web browser will do, but this is my preferred browser choice. Go ahead, what's the website?
It's websites.co.in.
Websites.co.in. Okay. So one thing I want to show you, I'm going to do a search in here, and I know you're wondering, well, why are you doing that instead of going into the location bar? It's because I want to show you that people do brand searches for your brand in Google as well. And if you have a knowledge panel, right, it's over on the right-hand side, if you have a Google My Business listing, which also appears in the right-hand side, then you will have additional kind of brand opportunity. You can see that there's some Google reviews, 4.3 stars, and there's some additional information that could be added to this list. This is coming from Google My Business, but if you look at, let's say, my personal name, you'll see that I have a knowledge panel as well. And if you do have a knowledge panel, but it has a little button at the bottom that says "claim this knowledge panel," go ahead and click that and follow the directions so that you have more influence over your knowledge panel, and you can nominate corrections to be made. Now, that will have to get approved by Google, but that's very helpful to, and just have that additional influence over your knowledge panel. All right. So we'll go back to websites.co.in. Another thing to think about when you're looking at your brand, or your company, or your personal name in a Google search, when you're Googling yourself, in other words, you want to see what the first 10 results are. Because if they aren't that favorable, or they're not really impressive, this is an opportunity for you to step up and to kind of stack the deck in your favor. Put your best stuff on page one. Now, if I keep scrolling, you're going to see I have set my Google settings to 100 results per page. That makes it a lot easier for me to look at things like just what's on page two and three and so forth, without having to hit next, 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 next. To change your settings, go to search settings, and then move this slider all the way to 100 and hit save. Okay. So let's see if, and these are called site links underneath the main listing. That's good, websites.co.in has site links. Are these the best site links? They're not bad. They're not bad at all. Yeah, we'll revisit that if we have time, but the best stuff that you have might be, instead of your, let's say Crunchbase listing, or your angel.co listing, maybe it's an article in Forbes Magazine or something that's about your company and how you've grown and how you're servicing your customers or clients, you might find a great podcast interview, for example, where you've been on a podcast, and that's not on page one, and you want to promote that. So how do you do that? You go to your homepage, and you add to somewhere ideally above the footer, because those links tend to get discounted pretty significantly. You'll put your best press and social accounts and so forth that you want to have ranking on page one. You'll put those on your homepage. They don't have to be super prominent, but the more prominent they are, the more link authority they will get. So if you put it buried in the footer, in tiny text, don't expect that to make much of a difference. So one thing I noticed with the homepage loading is it took a little while. I'm going to pull up a tool called PageSpeed Insights, which is a free tool from Google. You can just Google for PageSpeed Insights, and you'll find it. You haven't used it before. It's really straightforward. You just paste in a URL, let's say the homepage in this case we're going to use. But every page has its own PageSpeed Insights score. You might score really poorly on your homepage, but not as poorly for a blog post in your blog, or vice versa. So you want to look at more than just one page on your site with this tool. As it's analyzing, it's looking at not just lab data of, from its own data centers, what you're scoring, but it also looks at the field data, which means that it's looking at who is using your website, anonymized, of course, and aggregated, but all these Chrome users that are visiting your website are counting towards the field data. And if their experience is painfully slow, that's going to show up in the field data, unless, of course, you don't have a popular website at all, and you don't have enough field data for that to show. But in this case, we do, and you can see something pretty alarming here, which has the words "does not pass" in red. What is the "does not pass"? Well, it means that core web vitals, three metrics that are the components of core web vitals, you can see them here with the little badge in blue next to each of them, LCP, Largest Contentful Paint, FID, First Input Delay, and CLS, Cumulative Layout Shift. Those are the three things that need to be green in order for you to pass core web vitals. And you have different scores for mobile and for desktop. So you might feel happy about the score that you're getting, 85 isn't terrible for desktop, but the 40 is not great, right? That's a problem. We want to be ideally in the green for both, and we want to be in the pass zone for core web vitals for both. And you're not in either desktop or mobile for core web vitals. If you're wondering, what is core web vitals? I've never heard about that. There's a great article that I would recommend reading if you want to kind of geek out on it. It's on samuelsschmidt.com, all about core web vitals. It gives lots and lots of details, and why you should care about this is because Google is going to demote websites that don't pass. This is coming soon, like next year. Google has publicly announced this. They are going to start taking core web vitals into account in the rankings algorithm. So also, we want to make sure that we get a great score here. The 40 is not good. The 85 definitely even could use some work, too. I'd like to see both in the green zone. If you have a lot of mobile users, and also consider that Google has mobile first indexing. So Google is evaluating your website as if it's a mobile user. You really do need to do well with this. Is there a question that's coming in about this?
We actually have a few more website nominations.
Okay, perfect. So let me just wrap up a couple of points about websites.co.in, and then we'll move on to another website. So this idea of page speed optimization, getting a fast website, is important, not just for SEO, but for conversion. This squelched into the architecture pillar of SEO, so you have the three pillars, architecture, content, and links. This is one key aspect that we want to optimize. Another thing that we want to optimize in terms of, well, let's again look at the homepage, and this is in the content pillar. If you think about, well, actually, I'd say it even spills over into the architecture pillar. If your design and your copy are not really aligned with what your potential customer is searching for, and it's not prominent, you're going to have a problem, because it's not going to rank nearly as well. There's not a lot of content above the fold here. Above the fold, meaning before you start scrolling. There is, what, a couple of sentences here? Maybe 30 words? This isn't a lot of copy. And not that you need a page full of copy, but the more you're deliberate and intentional about what you put on the homepage above the fold, the better you're going to do, right? So I do think there needs to be a bit more text on the above the fold. I also think, from a conversion standpoint, you should have some social proof. If you look at my stevenspencer.com homepage, you'll see I have social proof above the fold in the form of "As Seen On" logos. "As Seen On," and these are all US TV networks. I've been on TV a number of times. Also had an article published in Harvard Business Review. I have a column in Adweek. So these are some great ways to convey that I'm not just a fly-by-night, like I'm not just another SEO. I am worthy of their time. And if you start scrolling, then you'll see more social proof in the form of testimonials. Here's Tony Robbins. You can actually hear the audio of him. If you've ever heard Tony Robbins speak, you know that this is his gruff voice. I never get tired of hearing that. So social proof takes the form of testimonials. Notice how I've highlighted in yellow the most important bits that I want people to read, because otherwise it's just a little wall of text, and they'll just randomly just scan it and not get the key points. So if you have testimonials on your website, definitely use the highlighting, or bolding, or somehow bring attention to the key points. I also have some really big-name guests on my podcast, so I've got that social proof. I have the books. I have speaking engagements. So I have pictures of me speaking from stage. So all of that kind of social proof should be present on your website, and you don't have all of it above the fold, but at least have some logos, whether it's clients, or places that you've been covered in the media, logos of media outlets, or it's places that you've spoken, right? So if you've ever spoken, here, for example, India Affiliate Summit, you'd be able to use their logo in your "As Seen On" set of logos. Okay? So, and then the books, right? So that, I think, is very important to conversion, not specifically SEO, but the fact that it's missing here, I don't see any testimonials, any prominent media outlets, or speaking events, or anything like that. So let's move on to another site. We're going to cover different aspects, different tools and things with each site, so keep paying attention, because we're not going to keep talking about the same thing. We're going to go completely into different directions with each site. So who's next?
Next, we have khojdeal.com. It's K-H-O-J-D-E-A-L dot com.
Okay. Let me just check that in the chat, make sure that I get that. Got it. All right. Another thing, from a technical perspective, that I'm going to check right now, is I'm going to leave off the HTTPS, and I'm going to make it just HTTP. I want to see if it redirects. And then I can also check to see if it redirects from the non-WW to the WWW. All right? So it looks like it's correctly doing that. So I tend to want to test multiple variations, HTTP, WWW, non-WW, with the HTTPS, et cetera, and make sure that all versions are redirecting. Another thing I'll show you is that you can test this to see what is happening behind the scenes. Are there multiple redirects happening? And I don't want to get too geeky and end up having your eyes glaze over, but there's this really easy-to-use tool called a server header checker. Now, this one is just on seobook.com, but you can just Google this, server header checker, and pick any of them, they'll all work. You put in a variation of your URL without the WWW, or without the HTTPS, and just HTTP, and let's see how it redirects. Is it a 301? Because that's important for SEO. We want to have a 301 redirect, not a 302, and we want to have only one redirect and not multiple ones. A chain of redirects is not good for SEO. So unfortunately, we are getting a chain of redirects. So I would fix that in the way that you're redirecting, if that's in the HT access, or the httpd.com, for whatever web server software you're using, go into the place where those redirects are set up. Because notice that first, I'm getting redirected 301, thankfully. I'm getting 301 redirected at the beginning here, and then I'm getting another 301 redirect, and then I'm getting sent to the final destination of status code 200 is a regular webpage. Okay. So avoid redirect chains, avoid 302 redirects, because 301s are the ones that are good for SEO. Let's have a look at the, instead of going to the homepage, and look at that, social proof, our partner stores. I like it. But let's, okay, this I don't like. Before I go on to a category page, I'm going to point out that something that looks like it's SEO copy, where it's just put a lot of text at the bottom of the page, where people tend not to read, this is not good for SEO. This might have been okay. I never liked it, but this might have been okay to do a decade ago, but this is the sort of thing that can get you in trouble with Google. So don't stuff a bunch of keyword-rich copy at the bottom of the page, hoping that it's going to help your SEO, putting lots of keywords and a long list like this. Not good for SEO, not good for making Google trust you. So let's go ahead and do a category page. Was there a question that came in?
Stephen, I guess you've turned off your camera?
Oh, I have? I didn't mean to. Let's try that again. Okay. Thanks for letting me know that. Okay. I'm back. Okay. So let's go ahead to a category page. Think of every page of your website as a potential entry point. So if you have a five-page website, you only have five potential virtual salespeople out there in Google trying to bring in traffic. If you have 500 pages, that's 500 virtual salespeople. That's a much bigger sales force. 5,000 webpages, even better, but they need to be quality webpages. By quality, I mean not thin content, and not duplicate content, and not spammy. And so this is a category page, which has very little content on it. This I would call thin content. It's not likely that it will rank for baby footwear. Yes, it has a title tag that says "baby footwear." You can see that in the top here in the tab. Baby Footwear is the title. Baby Footwear in probable, this is probably in H1. I can check the HTML code to check, but here's the thing, whether it's an H1, or an H2, H6, or even just a regular div or paragraph, it doesn't really matter. Google doesn't give you extra bonus points for it being an H1. Google cares if you make it prominent on the page. Google's rendering the page. And if you're wondering, how do I see what Google sees? Go to Google Search Console, which is a free tool. You should all have access to Google Search Console. If you don't, make this your next to-do, like for today. At the end of the day, when the event is over for today, then you can go to Google Search Console, which you can just Google it, right? Google Search Console, that's the easiest way to find it, and sign up. Because without it, you're kind of flying blind. You don't know which keywords are bringing traffic into your website, and you don't know how many impressions each of your search listings got in Google. You're just guessing. So this is free information. It's a free tool. You just go ahead and sign up and validate that you're a site owner, and then you're going to get so much great information about your site. Another thing that you'll get inside a search console is this URL testing kind of viewer. Another thing that you'll get inside a search console is this URL testing kind of viewer, you know, fetch and render type of tool. It's called the URL inspector. You just paste in a URL from your website, like the baby footwear page that we were just looking at. And let me actually just show you what that looks like. Because this is really, really helpful to know how this all works. So inside of, and we're going to switch to one of my websites. By the way, also sign up for the domain property of your website and not just one variation HTTPS or HTTP or WWW or non-WW. That's four different variations. But if you claim the domain property of your main domain, then you're going to get all the subdomains, all the variations of HTTP, HTTPS, and WWW, non-WW. Okay, so the URL inspection tool, that's where we would go. We would paste in a URL like the homepage, and it would give us information on how this page looks to Googlebot. Because it's going to render the page, it's going to figure out what's above the fold and what's not, what's big text and what's little tiny text, H1s, H6, div tags. It doesn't matter, it matters how you display it to the user and to Googlebot, because they are kind of one in the same. So we can check whether the page has been indexed and so forth using this tool. And we can click on the viewer, look at a screenshot, and then see what Googlebot sees. Was there a question that came in about this?
We actually do have a question that has come in from Pankaj Sharma. He wants to know, does putting too many ads on the website impact the SEO rankings? And also what role earned media plays in an overall SEO strategy?
What role media generally plays?
Earned media plays.
Oh, earned media.
Yeah.
Right, so if you get earned media, then you get links typically, not always, but in the article where they're featuring you in the, let's say, newspaper, hopefully they will have linked to your website. And that increases your link authority, which then improves your rankings. And it's a site-wide effect. It most affects the page that they're linking to, but you're linking from that page to other pages of your site. You have a top nav, you have a footer, you have maybe a sidebar nav, you maybe have breadcrumb navigation. So you're passing that link equity around all over. So here is what Googlebot sees, and what the heck, look at that. I see that there's a broken image. So I'm going to have to investigate that and see why is Googlebot not getting the image? Because it displays fine. If I view it on an iPhone, it doesn't seem to be rendering properly right now with this URL inspector. So that's something to investigate. See how you can get such great information and stuff changes. So don't just do this once. Be a regular kind of private detective of your website and SEO health. Okay, so we're going to switch back here to the baby footwear page for a minute. And I'm going to kind of wrap up by saying that this page as thin content is really all about not a lot. Because if you think about what is text on the page that is helping convey the keyword theme of baby footwear, it actually isn't very much. There are a bunch of links on the page. Actually, these are not links. It's like, oh, they are links. So if I click on them, they go, okay, so this way. If you take mentally the copy on the page and you break it into two categories, the copy that's linking to other places, that's anchor text, and the copy that is not linking elsewhere, that's really what the page is about. The stuff that's anchor text that's linking to another page, that's really what those other pages are about. When you link with, let's say, click here as the anchor text, you're telling Google that, hey, this page over here is all about click here. Probably you don't want to rank for click here or read more or view details. So you might want to have that first link to that page be a keyword-rich version, like maybe the title of the page. And so we definitely don't just want view details to link, but we want this offer to link to that details page as well for SEO purposes. Now, from a usability standpoint, there are probably reasons why it's not done this way. But if you just mentally set aside the link text, the anchor text from the rest of the copy, what's the rest of the copy about? There isn't a lot of copy that's not a link. So that about category, looks like there is supposed to be some copy in there. But again, that would be SEO copy, because it's way down in the footer and probably full of keywords and probably not meant for humans. It's probably not going to be super valuable. Like, you're not going to get a ton of useful information by reading that. So this page is a problem from a thin content perspective. Okay, so what's our next site? And I know we got to keep moving here.
So we actually have a lot of site nominations.
We're going to have to, I think, move into a lightning round mode, because we have 23 minutes left. And I'm guessing we probably have, what, at least five or 10 websites to look at?
Probably, yes.
Yeah, okay. So we're going to go very fast. I'm going to speak fast, I hope you don't mind.
So up next, we have startupvernal.com. It's startup V E R N A L dot com.
Okay, I'm going to have a look at that. Just make sure.
I listed all them out in the chat, if you want to just pick a few.
Got it.
Randomly, that would also be okay.
All right, perfect. Startup. For this one, I'm going to start looking at the link authority first. We've been looking at the website first, like the homepage, category page. We're going to switch to a different pillar, the links pillar, and talk about authority, trust, and importance. So let's start by looking at a great SEO tool called Ahrefs. I'll put the domain into the tool, not just the homepage, but the entire domain. You'll notice here that there's no data. So there's nothing available about this website. That concerns me. I think that maybe this is a new website that doesn't have any links. I'm going to pull up a different tool now. And remember, links are the currency of SEO. If you have no links, you will have no rankings, except perhaps for your brand name, and that's it. We're going to put into majestic.com. Yeah, see, this is a problem. We don't see any data. This tells me that you don't have any links. This is the first thing to focus on. I could talk to you about what to fix on the website, but it's not going to matter. Nobody's going to find this website unless they type into Google startupvernal.com or startupvernal as a Google search. Those kinds of things that you're trying to rank for, it's just, you're just not going to rank for them. So start building links. And don't do it in a sketchy way, like paying for links, because that's against Google's guidelines. You need to get on podcasts. And when you are a guest on a podcast, guess what? They will link to you and all the resources that you talk about in the episode. So if you just talk about, you know, whatever your topic is, and you never mention some of the cool tools that you have or some of the cool resources or articles, you're missing the opportunity to get multiple links from the podcast show notes page. When I'm on a podcast, I'm sure to include things like, oh, here's how to find a really good SEO. You know, this is a problem. Most people don't understand SEO deeply enough to ask the right questions to know that they're not getting snookered or fooled by an SEO consultant or agency that they're thinking of hiring or a potential employee. So I have this great SEO BS detector that is listing a bunch of questions that you can ask with only one right answer. They're trick questions. And then I mentioned where it is in the podcast interview. It's on stefan spencer.com and in my learning center. And they'll link directly to that page. So think in terms of how can I get on podcasts? What can I have to say that would be really valuable? How can I show myself to be an expert? And that's an easy starting point. Guest posting, you got to be careful about, because if it is so obvious to Google that it's a guest post, Google is not that keen on guest posting, so you have to be careful. It looks better to Google if you're a contributor. Like, I'm a contributor to Adweek, I'm not a guest blogger for Adweek. And so, yeah, this is a, Matt Cutts used to work for Google, and he was the head of the Web spam team. And he famously said that guest blogging is done, put a fork in it. That was back in 2014. So definitely be careful about doing too much guest posting or doing it in a way that looks so obvious to Google that it's a guest post. And certainly don't pay for the posts. Don't like pay $25 in order to have a guest post published, because other people are doing that. And like online casinos and payday loans and all that, they'll pay that money too. And then you're going to be in a bad neighborhood, what Google actually refers to as bad neighborhoods. Okay, so I know we spent more than a couple of minutes on that one, so let's move on to another site. Was there a question about links that came in?
There is a question actually from Pala Sreer. Two questions. First is, are AMP pages important? And secondly, is removing the menu completely and keeping breadcrumbs a good strategy?
Okay, so those are two very different questions. Let me just answer the AMP one. AMP stands for accelerated mobile pages. It is helpful to Google to have these mobile-friendly optimized pages. The thing is, is most people have problems to address in SEO than creating AMP pages and to, you know, just go down that rabbit hole. So my recommendation is to focus first on the mobile experience of your site without considering AMP. So are you on a responsive website design? Responsive design is the preferred approach from, as far as Google's concerned, rather than the other approaches. So if you're interested about learning about it, a responsive design, dynamic serving, and the other one is just a separate mobile website. That's the worst one, like a .mobi or an .m. That's not ideal. So if you want to learn more about those three approaches, as I said, fast, the fast answer is responsive is the best way to go. But you can learn about how to, you know, make this most optimal. Right, so the separate URLs, that's the .m or .mobi or whatever. Okay, so AMP, don't worry about it. If you're set up to have AMP pages, like your WordPress is configured with an AMP plugin and you're serving up AMP pages with the code in the HTML that gives that AMP URL as well, it's a problem unless those pages are somehow misconfigured. In the interest of time, let's skip the second question, but we could come back to it if we do have time. Let's pick another website to evaluate.
I guess next we can go with leanbo.com. It's L double E N B O dot com.
So one area that I haven't spoken about yet is keyword research, knowing which keywords are the right keywords to target. So let's see if this, okay, so the page speed is going to be an issue, because I'm still loading, loading, loading here. That's going to go your rankings and your conversion. This is taking a very long time. A quick thing you can do to see how many pages you have indexed in Google is to do a site colon search for your domain name. So you can see how I did it. I just put the word site, S I T E, and then a colon character, no space after that, then the domain name. And this will show you all the subdomains. Like in this case, we have BD dot, we have WWW, we have the non-WW. So this shows me that there is some duplicate content going on. See how we have the homepage at WWW? But I'm sure that there's a version of that at leanbo.com without the WWW. Because I'm getting other pages that are getting duplicated here. So there's the contact page, blog homepage, etc. So that, remember, the 301 redirect that needs to be set up properly, that goes from the non-WW to the WWW or vice versa. Pick one or the other, just always redirect one to the other, so we don't have this duplicate content problem. If you wanted to look just at WWW, we could put that into the query, site colon WWW dot leanbo.com. Now, we're only looking at the subdomain. You see how it says at the bottom, we've got some duplicate content, essentially. I'm paraphrasing here. There is some duplicate content and we've omitted it. If you want it added back in, click the link. Okay, so that means that you've got some duplicate content. It's firing off the duplicate content filter. So there's only 18 pages on the WWW subdomain. Let's try looking at leanbo.com without any subdomains. Now, remember, if we go back to this just leanbo.com query with the site colon, it shows all subdomains. How do I restrict it to only show the non-WW version of the site? I have to do a minus operator and then site colon and then BD and WWW. So let's do that. I don't know if there are other subdomains, but we're going to find out. No, there aren't. Only two URLs are showing up here that are leanbo.com. But we saw more when we looked at it without the, any minus operators. So there's some wonky things going on that I would need Google Search Console to really evaluate. But for sure, we want to have that 301 redirect set up. The title is not keyword-rich. The homepage is the most important page of the site. The title tag is the most important element on the page as far as on-page factors. And so we're talking about the homepage's title tag, that's really important, and it's just the word leanbo, which I'm guessing isn't a popular keyword. And we can check that by looking at a tool like Moz Keyword Explorer. It's moz.com slash explorer. You do need to have a paid account in order to get a lot of the valuable data. It won't give you much. It does give you a little bit for a few searches per month. But yeah, it's a great tool. I recommend it. There's also some free keyword tools that will give you some valuable data potentially, like answerthepublic.com and also asked.com. Can I ask whoever the owner is of leanbo, can you tell me what your primary keyword is that you're trying to rank for? And you can see there's no data for that keyword. Nobody searches. Well, in the US, let's switch to India. There we go. We'll see if anybody's searching for that. So did the person who volunteered the URL leanbo get back to you with the keyword they're targeting?
Not yet. But we have a question, if you would like to address it.
Yeah, sure.
So Gitanjali wants to know, how does one build links without a third? So Gitanjali wants to know, how does one build links without a third-party mention or links?
How does somebody build links without a third-party mention? I'm not sure I follow what that means. Can she rephrase that question?
Sure. We'll get back on that.
Okay, so third-party, well, what is a third-party mention? So if you're getting mentioned, but you're not getting a link, that's called an unlinked mention. If that's what she's talking about, an unlinked mention, how can she get that turned into a link? You would have to reach out to the webmaster, or the blogger, the journalist, the author of that piece of content, and ask them to change the mention of your company or your name to a link. That's a big ask. Probably not going to happen unless you have rapport with that blogger, or journalist, or website owner. But what you might want to do to start the relationship off is to offer some helpful advice or information. Like if you notice that something is broken on their site, and you give them a heads up to it, that's helpful. Don't just include in that email, oh, and by the way, I'd like a link, and can you make it this anchor text? And can you put it on this page? That looks really sketchy. That's not giving first, right? Whenever you're doing link building, always give first. Give, then get. Not, right, think how you can be giving and helpful to that website owner. Okay, so did Leanbo get back to us? Oh, you're on mute.
Sorry. Not yet, but Gitanjali has replied.
Okay, we'll move on. Yeah, let's actually switch to, well, we've got seven minutes left. Let's take the next question, and then we'll move on to another site if by the time I answer that, we don't get an answer from Leanbo.
Sure. So what should businesses do who are new and currently do not have enough earned media?
A new business needs to, I think, start a podcast, because everybody has a blog. Yes, you should have a blog too, but that doesn't make you stand out. Having a podcast, there are a fraction of podcasts in comparison to the number of blogs. There's countless millions and millions, and maybe billions of blogs on the internet. But there are only maybe a million podcasts. And when you are a podcaster, people are more likely to have you on as a guest on their podcast too. So bloggers tend to link to other bloggers, podcasters tend to link to and invite other podcasters. It's a community. So you're part of that community. That's the first thing I would do, is launch a podcast. As long as you have something interesting to say, or you're good at interviewing people, have a podcast, and interview the people that you want to get on their show. Before I got onto Entrepreneurs on Fire, that's a very popular business podcast, very, very popular, I was a guest. Before I got on it, before I could even get a chance to get on it, because he has a massive waiting list, I had him on my show. Remember, I have Marketing Speak and Get Yourself Optimized. So I ended up actually having him on both shows. And by the time I had interviewed him twice, and we had such powerful conversations, he was really impressed by me and so forth. And then I always had this intention of, I want to get on his show. So by the time the second interview wrapped up, it was his idea, like, totally, I got to have you on my show. We got to talk about SEO on Entrepreneurs on Fire. So that's a great way to start getting links if you're starting out. Guest posting, again, can be a way, if you're very careful about it, and you have great content, and you're being intentional and very discerning about which sites you pitch. Okay, so if we didn't hear back from Leanbo, then.
We have actually, they've given us four keywords. It's parenting, bonding, do-it-yourself, games, activity toys.
So parenting was one of the keywords?
Right, parenting, bonding.
That's a big keyword. That's very, very competitive. And a way to think about this is, if you're trying to rank for a competitive keyword, start with something that's less competitive. Remember, at the very beginning of this session, I gave the example of my daughter who was targeting Neopets-related keywords. And the simple thing she did to get started, to learn which keywords were the right keywords to use, is she just started typing in Neopets into Google. And as you type, you get autocomplete suggestions. So see, autocomplete gave example keywords like Neopets dailies, Neopets game, et cetera. And she created sections of her site based on what those popular keywords were that included Neopets. So that's a simple way to do it. If you want to get a little more advanced, there's a great free tool called Answer the Public, where you would put that into the tool. So let's switch this to India. And we're going to put parenting in here. This tool is going to scrape Google suggest, all those autocomplete suggestions, and it's going to build a pretty visualization for us, which is going to be really fun. So look at that. Now, you might have trouble cranking your neck to see all the different words and phrases. So just switch to DataView. It makes it a lot easier. These are who, what, when, where, how, et cetera, sorts of questions. And that's interesting. Oh, I put in, what? I didn't put India in as a keyword, did I? I thought I put parenting. Sorry about that. Talking and typing at the same time. Okay, so I'm going to get some parenting-related questions that are based on Google suggest. Back to DataView. There we go. Can parenting be easy? Can parenting cause anxiety? How does parenting change your life? Which parenting style is best? These are great questions. You could create an FAQ page. You could create blog posts. You could create videos based on these questions. And then there's one of my favorite free tools. This is a writer downer. You're going to want this one. You're going to want to tell all your friends about it. It's so cool. You know how if you go do a Google search for something, it will give you a People Also Asked box a lot of the times, right? What is good parenting? What is bad parenting? What is lazy parenting? What are the main four parenting styles? And as you start expanding these, it starts adding more and more questions. Imagine having a tool that scrapes all that for you. We put in parenting. I'm going to switch this to India. And let's see what it comes up with. And I know we are almost out of time, so we're going to end with this awesome tool. And I'll tell you where you can go to, you know, learn more from me as well. So this is, again, scraping People Also Asked. It's going to make a, oh, you're number 161 in the queue. That's terrible. Okay, what it's going to look like is a tree graph of all these questions, and then you can click on them, and then it will reorient to that question, and then another tree gets created, and you can click on a button that says, save as CSV file. So you can load it into Excel or Google Sheets, or you can create a PNG of it. There's a button for that as well, or just take a screenshot. So this is going to take a while. The thing about a free tool is sometimes you're in the queue. That was a lot. So let me tell you where you can go if you want to keep learning from me about SEO. I do have a ton of free content on steffenspencer.com, so go to the Learning Center. I have probably 100 articles, Search Engine Land articles, Adweek, and Founder Magazine, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. One of my first articles to recommend for you is the one on Search Engine Land. There's no shortcut when it comes to authority, why you need to take EAT seriously. That's expertise, authoritativeness, and trustworthiness. That's a Google acronym. Very important. You need to build that. You need to measure it, monitor it. I also have my blog, as I said, two podcasts for you to listen to, PowerPoint presentations from past keynotes I've given, and of course, the books you could buy online. But then also these great guides on how to hire a good SEO, how to pick the right SEO tools, et cetera. So there you go. Hope that was helpful.
Thank you so much, Stephen, for being with us today. It was an extremely interactive masterclass. I'm sure all of us learned something. So thank you for being here with us. Special thanks to our title partner, We Commission, registration partner, Valueleap, digital growth partner, Microsoft, and Inmobi, session partner, adpub.social, and gold partners, Admitad and Collectsent Ads. Thank you, Stephen. Thank you so much.